Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen's October 6, 2015 public meeting. The time is 6:30. We're going to go into executive session for half an hour and then we will come back to you and then reopen for the regular meeting. So the purpose of us going into the executive session at 6:30 is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel. And the issue is to discuss the litigation specifically related to the student officer pay issue. And then we will approve the September 22, 2015 Board of Selectmen Executive Session Minutes and then we'll come back to the regular session. And very briefly, between 7:00 and 7:45, we've got citizens input, selectmen's update, public hearing for the alteration of premises to indirect transfer of stock for the Renaissance Hotel. Planning Board discussion with Kevin Weinfeld for the Foxborough Housing Trust. State Representative Jay Bowers is going to be joining us to talk about Route 140 and our ongoing concerns on that stretch of road, plus the home rule petition that is on our warrant article for the fall winter town meeting. And then we'll wrap it up with town manager update and then a bunch of different items after that. So do I have a -- all those in favor going into executive session?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Jenny?
Yes.
Yep. So the chair says five, so we'll see you close to 7 o'clock. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen meeting, October 6, 2015. We just had about a half an hour of executive session that started at 6:30 to discuss the litigation relating to student officer pay and then we approved some meeting minutes from the last executive session. So this evening, starting at 7:00, we have citizens input. We're going to give a brief selectmen's update. At 7:10, the Renaissance Hotel at Patriots Place will be meeting with us at the public hearing to discuss alterations of the premises, change of officers and directors, transfer of stock. At 7:20, we have a session, hopefully Kevin Weinfeld from the planning board will join us to talk about the Foxborough Housing Trust that was implemented at town meeting last year. And then following that, Bill Keegan, our town manager, will give a town manager's update. And then we have about a dozen action items after that. So John, you want to lead us in the...
Sure.
...in due diligence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So a few minutes after 7:00, is there anyone here for citizens input? You just come up to the microphone, Stephanie?
Hi, Stephanie McGowan, 19 Roads Lane. I had a question. I know citizens input, you guys, I can't ask a question, you guys are going to answer back, but with, I had a, I was curious why the whole Board of Selectmen don't have a town email where some have, if you look up, some have like a personal email or they may even be not a personal email. I think Ginny, I think yours might say Selectmen Coppola. So obviously it's clear, but I was wondering if those emails, especially what's going on nationally, like with Hillary's emails and stuff, I would guess that some of that stuff maybe is archived or is saved or if somebody wanted to go up to the town hall and request, you know, their public record. Over the past couple of years, I've, you know, you might hear a certain selectmen say they've received numerous emails from residents in town. And so I was wondering if it's maybe at one point that our technology didn't, wasn't able to house a town email for everybody, but where they've expanded it now and it seems like every town employee has one. And even though you guys may not be technically an employee, a paid employee, obviously you're representing the town. So I was just wondering if maybe there was some discussion about everybody having a town email and that way if somebody did want to come up to town hall or that they're all saved. It just seemed kind of strange that maybe some are personal emails and I'm sure if somebody was asked to turn over emails, they would be happy to do so, but if they were all on town email, everything would be very easily to come up with, you know, what you were looking for, whether it was certain, you know, if you, if someone came up and they were requesting, we want to know what people were thinking about Splitsville or the marijuana, you know, if they're saying they're getting emails, then maybe it would be easier for us to crack what, how, the number of emails that are coming in. So anyhow, I'm not, I know we're not going to have a discussion vote, but I'm just wondering at some point, maybe you guys could, or Bill, could find out why we don't have town email for you guys.
Yeah. All right. So on citizens input, you're right, there's not a lot of dialogue in votes and stuff, but I think we can use our judgment and go a little further and understand what we can and can't do, but it's a good question.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been brought up before. I know when it was first brought up in my recollection, we didn't have the technology as much and...
Yeah.
Working in a lot of different towns, I know some volunteers don't even have email, but now everyone does.
Yeah. I think we brought some, you know, obviously my husband works in the school department.
Yep.
I know they brought somebody in and I'm not sure if he was working across the board or if it was just school things. I know they've expanded.
Yeah.
You know, so it just could be that maybe at one point there weren't enough town emails or there wasn't enough space to actually house yours and I was just, with everything going on nationally and all the discussion about emails, I was just wondering if it might be something so that we don't fall into that a year from now if somebody is wondering about emails or, I think it's protection for you guys as well as...
It is. And we are, even though we're volunteers, we are technically town employees with respect to open meeting law and stuff, so, you know, before, I'm not sure if we had the server and the tech, you know.
Yeah.
My preference, if there was a town email to use, you know, it would make my life a lot easier.
Yeah.
I'm sure these guys too.
Well, that's what I figured too. It's not, it's not, I wasn't coming up here, it really wasn't a complaint. It was almost like a general question, listening to what's going on now nationally, it just kind of seemed like, you know, geez, how come our town officials don't have town email? And that way you guys would never be accused or, I'm wondering, do you guys have to keep them? So you have, even though maybe it's a personal email, now you're holding that all on your computer.
Yep.
I'm guessing that, you know, that it's somewhat archived, maybe for a certain amount of time and, you know, or maybe forever. I don't know exactly sure, you know, how that works, but it was just something I want to bring to attention and maybe...
Yeah. And I think if it was an item of just five people doing it, but you look at planning board, you know, we probably have 150 volunteers in town that work on commissions and boards, so it's a big undertaking.
Yeah.
In my last position, there was a, we had a mailbox for, that went to all the selectmen. It was a, we used, it was called Fresh Ideas at Denham-MA.gov. So you could do the similar type thing, Fresh Ideas or whatever you want to call it, you know, for Foxborough. And it goes, it went to all five of you, you all received it, but obviously if you, if there was a response, you could do that on your own, but you at least should all receive it at the same time. That way there'd be no question about where it was going to instead of coming up with individual emails for each individual person.
But it's also probably a good time to remind people, if somebody does send an email to me or anybody on the board, it's public record.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you send an email saying, "I hate Dave," Dave's going to find out event.
Well, yeah.
So just be careful because it is, everything's public record.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, I'm a believer, if you're going to, if you're going to voice your opinion, you should put your, you should put your name to it, you know?
Yeah.
And take responsible for, we asked you guys to take responsibility, we need to take responsibility in what we would ask you guys or send you guys also.
Yeah. But in, not to keep going, but if the town hall goes forward and all the IT technical and stuff with the server...
That might be something that you guys end up doing.
It's probably time to do that, so.
Great. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thanks, Steph. Anyone else for citizens input? Okay, seeing none. I'll give a quick selectmen update. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Mary Beth. I know she's not here yet, but today is the day that that big storm was supposed to be coming up and hitting us today, so a lot of people don't know, but it was just nice to see Mary Beth corral the police, the board of health, the fire, building inspector. You know, we were represented in a room and then said, "All right, the storm's coming up." Talked about communication with cable access and the reporter, a place to go. Everything was so streamlined. I'm looking back from five, six years ago and we're saying, "All right, who's going to go to the common with the megaphone?" You know, the school, Deb Spinelli was there. So even though the storm didn't hit, I want the people to know that Foxborough is in an incredibly good position to be organized for one of these things that happen. So it was, it was nice to see.
We learned a lot from five years ago.
And four years ago and three years ago.
Yeah, setting up those shelters and, you know, like that.
Yeah. There's a, there's an organization in place now that we, that we just, it's playbook, basically, and you follow it.
Yep.
And it's, it works every time.
And I think the common agreement was, you know, now we know who's in charge and, you know, back in the day when people would show up and try to muscle and say, "I'm in charge and I'm in more," none of that happened.
No.
And it came down to if something happened, I think the people, the residents are comfortable that as long as there's information and it can get out there on their cell phones and people have numbers, it worked pretty well, so.
Well, and everybody has a role, so, and it's clear what that role is, and so there's no, never any question as to, you know, what people should be doing. And when it's done like that, then the amount of confusion gets reduced significantly when it happens, so.
And also just, I want a couple of things that are coming up in the past, and I know the selectmen are, there's so many things that go on, but I wanted to publicly say thanks for the effort that this board is going to. I know McGinty Day was a big effort. It's very successful. There was a master plan meeting, we'll talk a little bit about last week, where the selectmen, planning board, water and sewer, all the different departments got together to talk about downtown, you know, these groups that get together. We're lucky enough to have Lieutenant Governor Polito come to the HUGS over the weekend and I know Mary Beth and Bill was there as well. HUGS is a group, it's the acronym, is Help Us Get Safe. And if you go down by the fire department, you'll see the sign that was approved a couple of years ago. And we spent a lot of time on this board talking about drugs and alcohol and child sexual abuse, but this is kind of a quiet group for domestic abuse and it was their 10th anniversary for the run.
Yes.
I think they started in 2002, but they'd done two, it's just a mile walk and it was nice. And I think the message that we heard from Lieutenant Governor Polito was, "We're trying to make it so there's no door that you can come that's not the wrong door." And it was just a nice group that got together and really that's the, kind of the piece of a puzzle that is nice to have in Foxborough. Ginny, you went to the Mass Municipal Association for Selectmen this weekend. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yep. Saturday, it was that Saturday at Lake Pearl and it was, it's the Mass Municipal Association Annual Selectmen's Conference. It's free to members of the Mass Municipal Association. And I sat with the Rhythm and the Walpole Selectmen and it's a good, it's a good opportunity for networking. It was a, we had some nice discussions on mutual, issues of mutual interest. What they, what they did, they had a Beacon Hill update on legislation being discussed and how the legislation will affect municipalities. And in particular, they talked about the changes in the public records law and how this unfunded mandate will cost the towns in time and money. And so they urged everyone to contact their state representatives to vote against it. And one of our state representatives here this evening. Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito was there and she spoke about the issues facing the administration during this past year. And she also spoke about the community compact, which Bill Keegan is going to speak to in his report. And they had breakout sessions and I attended the breakout session in regard to collective bargaining and facilitating public meetings. And it was good information and, but it's good to be able to sit with your fellow selectmen and find, find out what their concerns are, what, some are different, some are the same. And it's, it's just interest, it's just interesting, so.
Great. Thanks. I appreciate that. On the Saturday.
Yes, it was Saturday.
We had talked last time about getting together for kind of a tour of all the new developments at the craft properties, the hotels, anything to do with the liquor licenses and the changes at the stadium, so we talked about October 27th. I think everyone's on board for that.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Twenty second. I'm sorry, twenty.
Yeah, twenty second was the, was the... They will get a calendar.
October 22nd. It's Thursday. It's at 4:00 and it's going to be a public meeting and I thought back and forth on this and we're going to reach out to the different boards that deal with permits and things that go on up at the stadium to kind of collectively walk it. And I do want it to be a public meeting. It's not a meeting where, because it's a working meeting, the public is invited, it's not an autograph and let's see the locker rooms of the stadium.
Right.
So it's going to be at 4:00. I'm envisioning about an hour, maybe an hour and a half just to kind of walk it with the reason being, when things come in front of us, I think we have a better perspective when we can see the things that are going on, because there are a lot of changes and there's more changes coming, so thank you guys all for making that day available. Quick shout out to the Dare Group that got together last weekend over at the Public Safety Building. A lot of tables, I'll be honest with you, it wasn't that well attended. People did come by and drop off their prescription drugs, but there was a lot of tables set up for, you know, the different drugs and alcohol and stuff like that, so thank you for Foxborough for putting that on again. We have a, we're talking about the master plan, there's another master plan meeting coming up. Oh, that's what it is. Master Plan Meeting is October 27th and that's what it is. You want, did you guys went to that meeting?
Yeah.
That's an important effort that's going on.
So with all the hard work that was done in creating the master plan, now comes the important step of actually implementing it. And it was a very good discussion last week relative to the best path to take, so to speak, and some of the issues that lie in front of us. It was attended by planning board, Board of Selectmen, DPW, Water and Sewer, members of the Economic Development Committee. Everybody had good ideas. Now we just need to focus and get everybody pointed in the right direction so we can really open up development opportunities, not only downtown, but the other nodes that have been identified. And this, it was, it was really a good first step. Like Jim said, there's another meeting on October 27th and hopefully this will continue to progress to a point where we can present something meaningful to the town and the steps to go forward, so. It was a good discussion.
Excellent. Thank you. And the last thing, there's a couple fundraisers that are going on and they may be overlapping when you get stuff reached out to you, but we've been, we just met this afternoon on the pavilion. Our past planner Sharon Wasson passed away and we're raising money to build a pavilion down at Payson Road for the youth, basically for the neighborhoods, for the sports, for the groups that get together there. And I think our goal was to wrap that up by the end of the calendar year in December and build it in the spring, so we got quotes. So if there's anyone out there that feels a passion for helping, and it would be nice to see some new people that moved into town to kind of, you get a lot out of it by meeting people, but reach out to anyone on the board and we can direct you. We've been meeting a lot on the flagpole, the 100-foot flagpole that is 100 years old plus. The goal of that is to get it funded and build it, install it by Founder's Day, I think. I think we're going right.
Right.
I think that's what we're shooting at doing. So again, we're about 20% to where we need to go on that and there's a lot of good people reaching out, so if you're inclined to help or to be generous, it's kind of the, you know, I'll be on the damned if you do, you damned if you don't. If you put it on the tax bill and pay for it, people complain. If you reach out, I think if you ask anyone that knows the history of the common, that effort was always done by the people and not tax money from the very beginning, so we're confident we're going to get there. And then the last thing is, we've done it, this is the third year, reaching out with the schools, the high school football team for Thanksgiving. We're looking for a couple, probably a couple thousand dollars to buy turkeys for all of our veterans and tickets if they want to go to the football game, so a little bit behind starting that, so if there's anyone out there that wants to jump in and help, we're going to do that sooner to get it all done by Thanksgiving, so those are the three ones that are on my mind.
Do you have an address for donations?
Which one?
For the turkey gift?
Right now it's my address, I guess. Well, actually, if you have, if you have a donation...
Mike Johns?
Send it to the selectmen's office.
Yeah.
Last year, people just sent me checks, but I'd rather go through the town.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll set up an account for that.
Yep.
May payable to?
May payable to? May payable to the town of Foxborough.
Yeah. Just note on it, Veterans Day, Veterans Turkey.
Yeah. Yeah. And all of these donations were, they're tax deductible, you're going to get a receipt that says, "No services have been provided for it," so it's a good time of year to do it if you're looking for that tax deduction. That's it I had on my shortlist, which always gets too long. Anything else? Anybody want to add?
Also, while you're talking about donations, if you want to donate to the flagpole, it's also to the town of Foxborough.
Town of Foxborough, correct.
But no flagpole?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So the flagpole, the pavilion and the turkeys.
And the pavilion also?
Pavilion also, yep. So, and there's different people running it, but it's probably easier if it just goes to the selectmen and we can figure it out. So the first thing we had on the agenda is the Renaissance Hotel at Patriots Place, if you wanted to come to the table.
I'll read the notice.
Yep.
This is a public hearing. Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 6, 2015, at approximately 7:10 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on an application to alter the premises of an all, of an annual all alcohol beverage hotel license and new officer slash director and transfer of stock for Colwin Management, Inc., doing business as Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place at 28 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. Manager Scott Williams. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members, Stephen Mellon, McDermott, and Miller. I have with me Scott Williams, who's the general manager of the hotel and also the manager of record on the license. And we're back before you for the same issue that we were here on September 8th, which the board voted favorably for. It's correcting the ad that did not have the change of offices, directors and shareholders. Just to refresh your memory, we were seeking your approval to move the club lounge from the fifth floor down to the first floor of the hotel where the spa is and then put two guest rooms in on the fifth floor where the club lounge is. Excuse me. And also a change of offices and directors. Mr. Zaris, who is currently a one-third owner of Colwin Management, would buy out the other two, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Schlescher, and be the 100% owner. Mr. Schlescher will stay on as a director. And then Mr. Zaharis, Mrs. Zaharis, is bringing on Terrence Pickford as Senior VP, Director, Treasurer, Christine Thomas is Director, and Julie Scott as Senior VP, Director.
Great, thank you. And so the board knows if you went through the packet, that the September 8th meeting minutes are in here.
Yep. Do we want to start out with rescinding that original vote and then, or do we listen to everything and then rescind and then...
I think let's listen to everything and then if everything's in order, then we'll retract.
Take the proven votes.
Forward.
Okay.
Okay. So you're done.
Certainly answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions to Mr. Miller?
Just one on the organization shot with Rent Spa Place. If you look at the percentages, they don't add up to anything I could follow.
Um...
You see, you see where Colwin Management comes in and that's the issue where we're changing offices and directors, but just explain what Rent Spa Place is and then, secondly, the percentages are...
Yeah. I'm sorry. Rent Spa Place is the actual LAC and Colwin Management is the management company that hauls the license and runs the hotel. The, the shares, I had the same questions, and these are these, the different trusts that are under Mr. Stevens and Schlescher, so the owners, excuse me, basically the owners of Rent Spa are Mr. Stevens and Mr. Schlescher and their various trusts and then...
So the trusts are, some of the trusts apportioned as ownership in Rent Spa Place LLC?
I...
It looks like they're apportioned rather than trying to identify the total weight.
They are, they're...
Okay, now I get it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I had the same questions when we did this. I didn't, I didn't understand it either.
But the issue is really the change in ownership.
In Colwin, there's no change in Rent Spa, it's just the change in Colwin. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Okay, so I think procedurally, we've got to close the hearing and then we can vote on it, so we can't have questions after the hearing closes. On a logistic, on one of your questions, by leaving the vote that it was, I don't think there's a danger to leave it because we're voting the new director, doesn't matter what was known before, but I'm going to defer to, it may be airtight if we rescind it and then revote it.
I'll be better rescind it and then revote it.
Revote for the whole, total package.
It'd be clean. Go with that one, so.
Okay. So let's, before we close, before we close the hearing, let's re-vote, vote to rescind that and then we'll close the hearing and then discuss the new vote.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we rescind the vote taken on September 8th to approve the alteration of premises for the Renaissance Hotel and accept the new directors.
I'll second that.
Okay. And then the discussion, it was, to be specific, it was a vote of 5-0-0 to approve it. So any motion was made, it's seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. If there's no more questions, we have a motion to close the hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has input to the application? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion on closure? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Discussion, dialogue? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to, do I have a motion in the affirmative?
I make a motion that we approve the alteration of premises of all annual alcohol beverage hotel license and new officers and directors and transfer of stock for Colwin Management at the Renaissance Hotel, 28 Patriot Place.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much for your time.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate your complete application.
Thank you.
Seven twenty-eight. First time? Oh, actually, no. Someone here from the planning board. Yeah, it's the planning board, that's fine.
Kevin, too.
Kevin, sure. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for coming in on your night off. No problem. We're on the next topic.
So Kevin Weinfeld, longstanding member of the planning board, past selectman, just so you know, because I don't know if you watched the last meetings, but we have the town meeting that voted for where we are right now with starting a, I guess, fund and it's going to run out and there's a certain date on it, so we were looking for some dialogue and input from the planning board with respect to the goals and objectives. I think we all had in our packet last time what the goals and objectives were. The, a developer was to put money in a fund, we were to put it towards housing, we need to come up with a committee.
Correct.
And it was going to be a joint committee.
Yes.
Vote for where that went. And I think the closure date is June 2016.
That's correct.
And if it's not used by June of 2016...
That's kind of open-ended about what happens, but, but really the bottom line here really is, is that, you know, in exchange for not continuing to do affordable housing all in one area of the town, which is where Caroll County Court is and was going to be at the state hospital, where the fit was probably not quite right there with it, even though there's a variety of types of housing there. In exchange for that, Mr. King has agreed to make donations up to, I think it's $300,000.
Okay.
So he's, he's made substantial portion of that donation. There's still some money that has to come in. And so the benefits were, number one, an opportunity to use the money to do housing in other parts of the town and spread that type of housing around, not all in one kind of location. And also, it so happens that since then, the state has offered up a piece of land near 95 and Walnut Street. John Mitchell Moore and the Housing Authority have shown some interest in that, so there's a great possibility that a portion of that... And also, it, it so happens that since then, um, the state has offered up a piece of land near ninety-five and Walnut Street, John Mitchell Moore and the Housing Authority have shown some interest in that. So, there's a great possibility that, um, a portion of that money, or all, I'm not sure how much, but could be put towards the purchase of that land. Because, uh, it looks like we're gonna be beyond our goal for forty B in the town of Foxborough, presuming that, um, a couple of the other forty Bs get approved. The, the domain has been approved, and I believe the one on Community Way was also approved by the Z B A, that's in conservation right now. That would, that would free us up to do more senior housing. And that's a possibility for some of that land that's up there, um, which would also be considered affordable, but it's just a different type of housing.
Okay, so you could use that fund to go strictly senior if it falls under the parameters of affordable.
It's still an affordable component, it's just not congregate housing, or, you know, housing of that nature. So, uh, I think there's some real opportunities now, but we really do have to get our heads wrapped around getting committee involved and then starting to make some decisions about how we proceed.
Okay, so as far as the committee, do you wanna give an overview of where we are with that committee?
Yeah, the, the committee, well, was, was a representative of several different boards and, and throughout the town, including the planning board, the, uh, the Board of Select and Adcom, I believe.
Yeah.
And, um, Housing Authority were the key, key players. Z B A was, I don't think so.
No, it's, it's seven members and
Seven members, there were four, four board members and three at large. And so we, we've only had one person express interest from the at-large side, so we're still looking for, to fill that other, those other two seats.
Do you have any good ideas on how to reach out to people?
Actually, I, I reached out to two people in the last two weeks, thinking one would say yes, and I got two noes. So my search continues.
Okay. Is that mostly, are you finding that because it's like, I don't have time to commit, or they didn't like, they didn't like the particular committee?
Not the time to commit, but I actually said that the duration of the assignment was, was rather short. You know, because it should wrap up by next summer, and, um, it was this personal, you know, they just didn't have personal time to devote to it.
Yeah.
And maybe it's lack of understanding too, unless people really understand it, and, and it's very public, out of sight, out of mind, maybe.
Yeah.
I don't know. Um, and I think it's just the society we live into, it's, people are busy and, and they don't wanna get involved, um, for whatever reason. But, and I said this at the last meeting, the town is entrusted with this money.
Yes.
If the town cannot get our act together to do it, my vote is to put it back to the developer and say, thanks, but no thanks, because, you know, i- if we can't figure out there's a need and a desire and a place for it.
Well, we know there's a need, it's just we, we have to
So we gotta figure it out.
Get organized to do it.
Yeah.
There's definitely a need.
Yeah, so from the, from the board's side, it sounds like the positions are filled, and we're just looking for one more person from the general public?
Uh, we need two more.
Two more people, okay. Um, and then between now, so, so some of the logistics, if, if the, the date certain is June of two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
Working backwards, and we should've been doing this a while ago
Yes.
collectively, but, um, wh- what do we need, so, so there's money at hand, do we need a project? Do we need a shovel in the ground, or just?
I don't think we need a shovel in the ground, and I, and, and I think that we, we need to have a, a group together that's gonna look at what the opportunities are. I certainly, um, would like to find out from John or some other representative from the Housing Authority how far along they are in making overtures to the state for that one particular piece of property.
Okay.
If, if that does not pan out, I know that, you know, in conversation with Mr. King, like as an example, the house on Market Street was one that would, that needs to be, um, replaced.
We're out there cutting the grass today.
Right, so, so it needs to be either demolished and have a new duplex, triplex, something built, or, or some type of a rehab on the existing property. Uh, that was part of the discussion we had the other night, because in order to make that work, we'd have to have sewer, there's no, there's not, there's not good enough soils there, and there's not enough room
Yeah.
to put a septic system, and, um, the Housing Authority at some point...
We don't need a silo. We need cooperation, um, between the three towns. We probably have a little bit more horsepower collectively. And it, and Jay Ash, when he got off the bus, and I think Bill overheard him, said, you guys really got your act together. Because we are working cooperatively to try to make a difference. So, I get the Foxborough thing, and believe me, I'm all over it, and this is just another cog in that wheel, so that, you know, 'cause I sent, Jack wrote the letter, we sent a letter to Jay Ash about the areas of our concern, and identified all of them, and he sent it to Stephanie Pollack, who is the Secretary of Transportation. So, they're both communicating, so we finally, and it's related, it's the same deal. You know, we have the pleasure of having a four point three percent unemployment rate, there's a lot of traffic, um, a tremendous amount of traffic. And that's good, right? I mean, it means people are working. But at the same time, if we wanna improve that economic base, that diversity, I mean, we've got Meditech in there now, they got six hundred people a day coming up. Commerce was gone eight years ago. It's a different dynamic. Jake and Joe's is, you know, you can't go by there and it isn't full. The residents in, they're running it a hundred percent on the weekends. You know, on weekends, I don't know if you guys see it here in Foxborough, Mansfield, the traffic on the weekends is like nightmarish, 'cause it's all at once, and it's all, you know, morning long. So that's the...
Try having a football game.
So that's the plan, if you will, so...
Well, Jay Ash and, and Stephanie Pollack are concerned about economic development, and we are too.
Correct.
But also, one of our major concerns about the reason we wanted to see, or at least, I don't know about the rest of you, but I wanted to see the state be aware of those intersections is the safety, the safety component. So you've had economic people come in, are you also gonna include safety people?
Well, that's who's, the state, the, the head of state, um, the engineering from Mass Highway, Budrow is like, he's the top guy, so
Okay.
he's coming out. I'm hoping that we can include Tinlin. Uh, we've got agreement, at least on paper, from SERPA, which is the Southeastern Regional Planning Council, and then the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, which, you know, in a former life, Bill dealt with them up in the Denham area. So, that's our other challenge, we got two counties. So we're bringing those two together, and again, on paper, we're hoping that SERPA and Metropolitan Area Planning Commission will work together to create a, a needs analysis, 'cause all this stuff has to be documented and proven, and then it gets on to what we just passed out, this capital conversation about Mass Highway and their plan for two thousand and eighteen. You all were, I think, informed that we got money in the transportation bond bill last year to address issues, the charter school, Central Street and Commercial, but we've been told the bond bill isn't coming. There's not gonna be any release of any money, because we're one point eight billion in the hole with this switch of the administration. So there's no money coming out, and it's really eighteen before they get that tip list going. So, I'm hoping that, again, we've got a little attention from them, and I was really happy, you know, again, we got your note Thursday, I think, and we're able to make some phone calls, and got somebody say, okay, we'll do it. Um, so they hear us, which is good news.
That's good.
And, uh, yeah, it was, 'cause, you know, two years ago, we could send that, we'd still be waiting for a licked envelope. So, we, we getting somewhere.
Would it help, um, I think, Bill, I had sent you an email a while ago, uh, there's a resident in Foxborough, a colleague of mine, that's very well-respected, she's a traffic engineer, lives in Foxborough, and she's volunteered her services if we need it for planning conceptual work. I can picture a large board with the one forty corridor, with all the different development components, something that is a leave behind and saying, this is what our issues are, dangerous intersections, school, uh, some of the graphics and stuff, I don't know, Roger, if that interests you, but she's willing to...
We'd love to have that.
Yeah, she's with McMahon Associates, and they do a work throughout the state, so...
And they probably identified some of them, right?
The good news is that, that, that accounts can be done by N A P C and SERPA.
Right.
They got the gear, they got the people, and it doesn't cost the town a dime to have that done, and it doesn't cost Mansfield anybody either, and Norton.
Right.
And the thing I've said right along is, one forty's the lifeblood of the three communities. Yes, it's great to have the interstates, but the interstates are through roads. It's one forty that's the lifeblood, it really is. And it's no, no less so to us than it is to Mansfield and Norton. This is, this is just the, the Foxborough section.
I mean, when you look at just the cloverleaf alone, and the new design, you'll see it down at two ninety-five, you get off the highway, and you don't go around this, you know, hundred and eighty-degree roundabout that sucks up about fifteen acres of, a, a corner to practice your, you know, left-hand or right-hand steering maneuver.
Well, this was designed nineteen sixty-two standards. Hey, you can't build this.
Right, 'cause now it's a direct, a direct merge off the highway.
Yeah.
And you, 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 that leaves room for signalization, it puts the exit ramp closer to the, where the highway intersects, so you haven't got these broad turns and waste of space. So, and that's already on the plan for ninety-five, that will maybe two thousand and twenty, unless Google beats them to it with a, you know, a driverless car, you know, who knows? But, so, I would love to have her participation, um, 'cause I'm not a traffic engineer, all I can try to do is bring them together. And if we had maybe an ad hoc committee from Foxborough formed, uh, we got an opportunity, again, on the second of November, I gave you the flyer, that Mass Highway's gonna come out to, to Mansfield, I hope that we can have a, a representative of your board, planning board participate. Uh, we're, and we're trying to do the same in the other, in Mansfield and Norton, and show them that we're, we're serious about this. You know, we take public safety serious, and, um, I think we're gonna make some, you know, make some progress. It's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's not gonna happen, you know, next year, but it, you gotta get it on the list, and you gotta get them moving towards it. But I was thrilled that SERPA and, um, the Metropolitan Area Council said that they would, that would work together to do it, which is, I don't think that's ever happened before. So, you know, we got a good shot to get some people. So the other piece about one forty, and I'd love it, um, again, not to... None of that's gonna move away as a result of the designation, but it might get some people's attention, because we've had one crossing guard that was, you know, nicked, uh, there about five years ago. Roger did a bang-up job getting the lines in, which created at least a, a safety lane, but it's still very, very narrow.
Yeah.
We did get, and I asked, again, Mass Highway a couple of weeks ago, there was some repavement. So, they get the whole safety thing, the charter school, as, as you all know, fifteen hundred kids a day are going in and out of there from cradle to grave. I mean, they're, you know, they're, it's a big kindergarten, pre-k, school, after-school stuff, so it's huge. And we've got a lot of Foxborough buses, I think, three or four that are bringing, they're, uh, getting over there, and then they're forced up to Central Street, or forced down to drive through, through Foxborough Plaza.
You can really see, you can see the intersection line right here.
Yeah.
And that's probably sixty degrees in there.
Right.
Yeah.
That's about it, so. And here's Walnut here, and then it turns and runs down easily.
Yeah.
And you get, the end is right there, I mean...
Yeah, you can't get over that, there's actually a curb.
You can go through there, I've been through there.
Yeah, I drove through there.
Well, you need a pickup truck, it'll take the bottom off a regular car.
Right, it will.
Yeah.
But sometimes, in the winter, it's a good little place to run a plow through.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, just from a safety perspective, to get in the backside of,
Right.
Yeah.
The oncology.
That would be a much safer way to get into that. Absolutely.
It would be, it would be a dream.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause then people could, it would relieve, and again, not a traffic engineer, but it would repusher up one oh six, an old one four, a couple of drive, which is a disaster.
You could almost eliminate the, the right turn onto one forty from that end of Walnut Street, this turn here.
Yeah, the connection was on the other side, yeah.
And if you could eliminate that and just have traffic going in, that's, that's a good bit of the problem.
'Cause it's a big part of the pipeline, it comes through.
One of many intersections that's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll spend twenty-five years mastering that intersection, so...
Well, you live in the right place for it.
Oh, I'll tell ya, it's, I take my daughters to train in the morning, and you've gotta hit it, if you see an opening,
Gonna go.
you've gotta go from zero to forty in two seconds, or you're gonna miss your spot, and it's, 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 uh, it's, it's suicide.
People, people doing this, by the time they get to here, they're back up to fifty, fifty-five percent of hours.
Yeah, and they're really trucking, they're, they're moving.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, so you have to pick your spots, and then you have to be aware of the other side and pick a, a spot there and hit it.
Not to speak on behalf of the charter school, but I've had conversations with Mike Logan, the superintendent, that they've had conversations with Schneider and the leaseholders of that property.
To, to go through there?
Yeah, to go through, and again, create an intersection in front of Brad, Bradley's Plaza, and then you got the Mass Highway garage that is right there as well. So, you know, they've, they've purchased a couple of homes along Central, so, you know, they're looking at ways of trying to improve, you know, their flow, uh, through there. So, there's a lot of conversation, I'm looking forward to the meeting, and as we get closer to the date, if there's gonna be, and I'm, I'm looking at you, Ginny, um, maybe you could be the liaison that I could work with to,
Sure.
like, come up with a
That'd be great.
schedule, or however we, you know, and you don't get to drive the bus, but you get to...
You don't want me to drive?
You can be the boss of the bus, how's that sound?
What's the date, uh?
We don't know yet, uh, John, we're, we're literally today, we got a commitment that we'll have one.
Okay.
But I'm not sure, we're hoping before Veterans Day, so whatever that is this year.
November eleventh?
Okay, yeah, it's always the eleventh.
Always the eleventh.
So just as you're leaving,
Eleven, eleven, eleven.
So just as you're leaving, you're back on TV.
Back on TV.
Oh, great.
I was informed that we had audio the whole time, you know, we were...
Oh, good, 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 okay. Alright, so I'll close it here, Jay, I wanna say thank you, I know you're doing double duties in both towns, and Jack, it's great to have a Foxborough resident, understand this.
Something that I missed, though.
Oh, you were gonna talk quickly about the, um...
D C, yeah.
Yeah.
So back, um, at the Maytown meeting in, in two thousand and fourteen, there was a home rule petition passed to lift the restriction of recreation only on the auditorium on the state, um, hospital property. We got something back from D C A M, and then we lost Sharon in the planning department when we were on that whole process of,
Yeah.
is this gonna go? Because D C A M had some issues with the wording. So it's back, the ball's in our court again, we need to have a conversation with them. Hopefully, the home rule petition holds together so that we don't have to take a second vote, but we have to change some of the wording and have a conversation with... So this is the situation that tripped up, like I was describing earlier.
Yeah.
Where somebody says, no, you know, it's not gonna work, we want another bite. So we're working with Matt Kachery at, at D C A M, he's new, um, we've known him, you know, working in the, in the building before, so he's very helpful. So we've got some correspondence, um, that we need to maybe get on the docket in the next couple of weeks so that we can try to move it forward, um, to see if we can get it out of committee.
Okay.
'Cause it's stuck right now until we, we redo the wording, and I'm hopeful that the signatures of all of you will advance it forward, and we don't need another vote.
Yeah, and then we'll obviously get some alternatives, what we can do with that property.
Exactly, and that's the objective, is to finish that, um, project, and, um, you know, I walked the other day, it's, it's pretty cool to see what has happened.
Oh, and that, the house walk, yeah.
When you, you walk down North Street and see the bill, the ho- homes that have been built, you see on Paceon Road, the reuse of some older homes that were there, that used to be for staff at the Foxborough State School, and then you look over and you see the fields that you got, the multi-mixed generational housing that's been created, the co- commercial, you know, end of it, the safety building, I mean, really, congratulations.
It's, it's a nice, it's a nice quadrant.
I had, uh, had the pleasure walking with Senator Timblety, and he's had to deal with Med, Medfield. And he said, man, if we could just, you know, duplicate what happened in Foxborough, life would be grand. So, it's a gem, it really is a gem, and it's been, uh, it's been awesome to see, and I know you guys have lived through a lot of bumps and bruises to get it done, but it got done.
It took ten years to, to go through the process, and then just to start the development.
Exactly.
So this has been going on for a long time.
Probably like eighteen years, nineteen years.
Longer than that, I think.
Twenty.
In the eighties.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Kevin Poria was our state representative for half the town, so.
Yeah, and, and through the recessions where developers went belly up and it kept going, so, and...
No, congratulations, really good, you know, good job by all, and, uh, again, it shows when the community works together and, you know, good leadership and planning, and you coalesce around ideas and you work through it, you know, and it's, it's really helpful, and, um, we're, uh, we're excited to keep pushing.
And thanks for
Yeah, I think I went over my time.
No, it's, you know what, I'll be honest, it's refreshing where I can sit with a state rep, and you know the intersections and the houses and the history, and there's, there's a lot of work to do on one forty, and, um, I mean, it's a collective effort, and there's a lot of pieces, so, uh, I'm encouraged.
Key element of our office.
You know, just one last thing, um, Jay Ash, when we gave him the ride, he said to me, can you get me a map? And a map, as you know, you know, it's awesome today, you can make these maps the size of the wall behind you. And he said, how about if I give you a map of our regional sewer system, and I'll draw with a red pen where we rode around? And you get the width and breadth of what that looks like.
And that's
And it gets, it's huge, and congratulations to Roger and all of you for helping us get that done. I mean, we have sewer downtown now, we have capacity, and I think it's gonna be a game changer for future opportunities that'll come from down there and the rest of the town, so, but it's everybody working together, and, you know, hopefully we can do it on some other issues that we're working on and get things to, to go, so appreciate, you know, working with all of you and, um...
I just have one question. Do you know if there are any, um, like, grants or anything, is the state offering any grants for sewer development?
Just the grant, uh, ask her, I don't like filling out grant stuff, I just keep asking for money, so
Yeah.
when Jay Ash got off the bus, what do you need? So, you know, they're all, the committee is looking for different opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, it's.
Not much.
There's not much.
Um, not a lot in that area.
And we're competing with the Cape, who, I mean, we're the first ones to have a regional treatment plant that'll handle five towns in a, in, in the Commonwealth. So, you know, legislation, the whole nine yards, so, we're ahead of the line, but the problem is there's not enough money, um, because it's all been spent on, need I say, some other things, so, we need to, you know, work with the governor. Uh, I've met with him, with, you know, Lieutenant Governor Polito's been here twice in the last four, five weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we talked about the same thing over again, she was in the house, uh, Matt Beaton, who's the Secretary of, um, Environment and Energy. He, he knows him, I mean, he sat in the house with us, and we'd talk in caucus, you know, it's like, what are you doing, sewer, 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 that's all everywhere I go, and I talk about sewer. So, they all know that, you know, we're working on it, and, uh, hopefully we'll get some help, so, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Jack, nice to meet you.
Yeah, Jack, nice to meet you.
Good to see you, Jack.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, so for all of you at home, um, that are not in this area, we ran out of electricity.
Ran out of electricity?
We ran out of electricity for about an hour.
They purposely didn't block you out.
Yeah, so the transformer blew down at Walnut and one forty, and, um, so, if, if you didn't see what was happening, uh, we, we invited Representative Jay Barrows and his aide, uh, Jack Walton, Foxborough grown and bred, to talk about the one forty, um, between Mansfield and Norton, and specifically Foxborough. And then we also talked about the home rule petition for the, um, Child Sex Hubboos Awareness Committee to try to get some help from Representative Barrows in the House to kinda define a little bit better who's a reporter, when they see something, to say something. Uh, so we get a little bit of work to do on that side, too. So, that concludes the meeting, other than, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, town manager Bill Keegan to give us a general update.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, um, I'm just, uh, good to be back, I spent, um, seven days out in Seattle, Washington, at the International City Managers Meeting this past week. Um, it was great to see another part of the country, but also to learn what's going on on, on a more international level, what's, uh, in our business, which is ever-evolving as, as, as you might expect. Uh, but as, as, as it evolves, there, there are still some pretty common themes that we still talk about on, and, and in cities and towns, and that is economic development is a, is a very big topic, I, I picked up some really good information about that, learning, listening from, uh, to, to, uh, real estate developers from all around the country as to what they think is, you know, the key elements of what we should be looking for for, kinda redevelop a downtown. Um, understanding that the, uh, the thinking that goes on in the new millennials, who are gonna be the next generation of people that are moving into these, into these areas. And then, um, and then also, uh, learning more about organizational development, how we can further, you know, uh, turn our, uh, organization into a high-charging organization, which I, there was a lot of good elements already there, but we're trying to, to further improve that. And I had some really good, um, information to talk away from that, as well as some of the new technologies that are coming out as well, that are, that are, I mean, it was, oh, so, it was amazing to me that ten years ago, when I, when I went to the same conference, I was probably one of the first persons to use a, uh, an iPad. Now, virtually everyone has one, and that if you go into these, these, uh, the trade shows, everything's about technology. So, it, it's just the world has truly evolved in that regard, and, uh, I got an update on Board Docs, which is the, the company that we're looking towards using to, to, um, to, you know, move our, our meetings into more of a paperless environment. And, um, their next version of their software, which we've been holding off until it comes out, I actually did see the version, the, uh, the, the pilot version that's been, that's been finished, um, but they're, they're not, they've not, they were reluctant to give me a date as to when it's gonna be released. So, they're still going through some stages of it, that they're, that's still gonna work, but I'm s- thinking, still thinking around the first of the year that we'll see that release, and then at that point, we'll be back to with, uh, our steps for dealing with that. This afternoon, I did, however, did sign the contract for a new phone syst- townwide phone system. Um, there's a few, uh, the few departments that won't be part of it because they, they're, they're outliers, if you will, but, um, but by and large, most of the town departments will be on this new phone system, so including the schools and town, public safety. Um, and so, and it's, it's actually, it's, it's state-of-the-art technology, which I'm really, really glad to see. And, uh, we, and, uh, I knew, to the credit of our new IT Director, Aaron Hya, he negotiated a terrific price, uh, off the state bid list to get us one of the, the best document, best, uh, technologies I've seen yet in that area. So, we, we, we hope to have that up and running by the first of the year as well, so we'll be seeing that coming out. Um, the Economic Development Committee, by law, by the way, is meeting again tomorrow night, um, I've been working with Dave and, and a couple of members of the committee to try and get that squared away, and so, we're excited about that group, it's a, it's a very, very, um, influential group. I think it'll be, they'll come up with some great, uh, ideas, and a lot of focus on, on certain areas of town, of course, but, um, a real initial focus on downtown, but we're gonna move out beyond that. Um, since then, since that, since the last meeting, I've had, um, a particular developer's expressed a lot of interest in the, in the fire station building. Uh, we're, we're finalized, uh, the contract documents for the auction, uh, process to go forward. So, we're looking forward to having that probably, uh, in, uh, before Thanksgiving.
So, still the, the fire department, fire, firehouse and.
And the, and the.
General home.
And the funeral home will go, will go at once. Um, a- and, as you pointed out earlier, I attended the, uh, the Huggs Family Walk on Saturday, uh, it was great to see everyone there, and we appreciated the opportunity to, uh, just visit with Lieutenant Governor Polito, who was in town for the second time in just a few weeks, as, as the representative pointed out. Um, two announcements, um, I just wanted to also make the, the community aware is that, uh, and, and actually on a good news, um, I noticed that there was, um, that the Foxborough Police Department set a new record up at, of a, of a July Stadium this past weekend. Uh, the Patriots game, they had no arrests, no arrests, uh, during that game, which is something that's never happened. Um, so that there was, they had, um, a few protective custodies, but there were no arrests during that, during that game, so that's great news to see, hear that. Uh, it was the fewest at the, and that, that's the fewest ever in the team's history in Foxborough, which, which dates the early nineteen seventies, said Police Chief Ed O'Larry, uh, who was interviewed in this article. Um, it's in Friday night, uh, police took only seventeen of the forty-seven thousand eight hundred, uh, uh, fans in, into custody during the Ed Sharon concert, and of those, six, only six were arrested, and, and the rest were protective custodies. Uh, and again, no one was taken into custody during the soccer game, so, what's significant about that is that we had a hundred and twenty-five thousand fans in that stadium over the weekend, and only, we had only six arrests, and twenty-three people taken into custody during that period of time, that's extraordinary. So, I'm glad to see that, that's the kinda trend that we're moving in, and, and, uh, congratulations to the craft organization and to the, to our police and sa- and public safety folks for doing such a great job, and to, uh, all the staff members, of course, that work at the stadium as well, so appreciating that. Hopefully, that's a trend that continues. And then also, the, um, we wanna say that, uh, I wanna say that, that on Thursday, October fifteenth, uh, at approximately ten, at ten AM, the MBTA were conducting an emergency evacuation drill on a communal rail line that will be stopped outside of the Foxborough Community Rail Station. The exercise is scheduled to take place from approximately ten AM to twelve PM, so it's about a two-hour event, during which time neighbors, uh, can expect heightened activity in the area starting as early as eight AM. Um, yeah, as part of the exercise scenario, uh, ex- excuse me, the, the exercise is designed to train public safety officials how best to enact emergency response plans, policies, and procedures to a mass casualty event on a commuter rail train, to ensure an effective exercise. Experts and representatives from, from numerous agencies will take part in the planning process and, and, uh, and will, and part of the exercise during that evaluation. Agencies taking part in the exercise include the MBTA, the MBTA Transit Police, uh, Kiolis, the Craft Group, Foxborough Fire Department, Foxborough Police Department, Mass Coastal, and Fallon Ambulance Service, Fallon Ambulance Services. So, um, that should be very interesting to see how that, how that takes place, it's always good to see that type of thing take place, uh, so we have, we're well, well-trained in that area. And, um, also just a reminder that, um, collections, uh, that Dooley, uh, at the Spolsters will be collecting, uh, shop, shops from the Foxborough residents twice over the next few months, collections will be held on Friday, November thirteenth, and Tuesday, December fifteenth, uh, from twelve to two PM, and the collection will be held in the McGinty Room at the Foxborough Public Safety, but they locate it at H-Snow Street. If anybody has any questions about that, please contact Dooley at five oh eight, five four three, one two eight nine. And then, uh, selec- selectin, uh, Capola mentioned earlier that, um, that, that she had heard, um, at the meeting with secretar- with, uh, with Lieutenant Governor Polito on Saturday, that, uh, that several communities are involved in the community compact process. And we've also been engaged in that process as well, in fact, we've been working on developing a strategy for what we would like to submit for considerations part of our community compact agreement. Uh, we've identified, and I'll share this with the board at the next meeting, so you, you can all see this, and then get some feedback from you as to, if you, if you have further considerations about what you'd like to do with this, but we can actually solicit help from the state in, in various areas, including, uh, housing, competitive competitiveness, job creation, retention, uh, technology, um, economic development, all those, all the key areas of which we're already in, in, fully engaged in, but can provide some, get some additional assistance from the state in these areas. So, the state's asking for the, us to partner with, with them on these issues, and, and share with them some of our best practices. At the same time, they'll give us additional tech, uh, technological, technical services from the state that can actually help us in these areas. So, we're fully involved in this process already, and, uh, we'll be, uh, we'll be submitting those over the next few weeks. But I want, I want, the next meeting, I wanna bring the board into this discussion, so we're on the same page with you all as well, and at the same time, maybe get some additional input from some of the other boards around town, uh, Planning Board, or maybe the, uh, uh, you know, Finance Areas, et cetera. Areas that we, that we can use some of our help in.
What, what piqued my interest when, when Lieutenant Governor was talking about that is that she said, if you, if the towns, um, agree to this compact, community compact, they get like bonus points.
Right.
Yeah.
For things like, you know, grants and stuff like that, put you a little ahead of the.
The process.
The town, so, I thought, that's why I, I asked Bill, we were familiar with that.
Yeah, and, um, it's, a few years ago, they had a different kinda process under the Patrick administration, um, which, um, a lot of communities got involved in too, but, um, that evolved into something different. Now, this is the new administration's approach, which I, I actually think is a very good process, because it's actually sharing of information.
And it's a two-year commitment.
Right. Right.
So, so this is something that you're doing with your staff?
Yes.
Not, not so much with Planning Director and things like that, but internal to you.
Internal, and then, and we'll, we'll be sharing it with all of you and, and with others to see if anybody else has any further thoughts about before we submit this. Um, but we'd like to get it going, so, there's a few communities that are, are already ahead of us, and Mansfield is one of them, I think Eastern is part of it as well. So, we wanna, you know, make sure that, and, and I know that Norton's gonna be involved in it as well, so, this again demonstrates that we're working as a region to try and, uh, uh, you know, to, to be, um, involved with all the things that the state's doing, so that when we ask for attention, we'll, we'll get some. I think that's really, really key in that process.
Okay.
So, those are the, the, uh, the key points that I wanted to just bring up with you tonight. Um, Mary Beth has a, a few updates in terms of hiring processes and things that she's been working on, if you wanna just update the board.
Sure, um, I think we mentioned last time that the library director has been selected, um, we've asked, he starts on October nineteenth, his name is Manu Letay, and we, um, tentatively will schedule him to come on the twentieth to meet with you. Um, he's currently the East, East Bridgewater Library Director, and he lives in Fall River, he's very excited to start.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and last night, we con- the screening committee concluded the, um, semifinal interviews for Planning Director. Um, we haven't contacted the candidates yet, but the final interviews will be held before the planning board at a special meeting on October fifteenth, which is next Thursday, I believe, um, so we'll be contacting the candidates to let them know who's moved on in the process.
So, the planning board does the final interview after the screening committee brings the two finalists? Excellent.
So, and, um, we haven't got a location for the meeting yet either, but we're, I think we're planning on the fifteenth. Um, we've made a lot of progress with Personnel Wage Board, um, although, you know, very tragically, uh, tragic loss to us was Vivian Pitts, one of our members, um, we decided show must go on, Vivian would want us to, and we met last week. Um, we are, um, moving forward on defining a mission statement for the Personnel Wage Board. Uh, personnel bylaw revision that'll come forward to, to you and go through Town Council, um, as a warrant article, and it's going to pretty much be a personnel bylaw that mentions that the town has policies, and then defining a process for creating policies that involves, you know, Town Manager, Board of Selectmen, employees, making sure it's a fair process. But we didn't wanna tie, we wanted to untie the policies from the bylaws, so that if the law changes, if a policy changes, you don't have to keep coming back to town meeting to change a bylaw because the FMLA added something, or, um, whatever. So, we're working hard on defining the different pieces of that, and we have, um, Council coming on October twenty-seventh to help us with that, but, um, we're, you know, gonna refurbish the Personnel Wage Board website, and, um, they've provided some great input on policies and, and such. Um, we are looking for another member, um, someone, we're looking for someone with, um, considerable either human resources or business experience, um, we have some names, but if anyone is interested in applying.
Legal background too, would be, would be helpful, too.
Yes, employment law would be ideal, um, benefits, experience, anything like that. So, um, we are looking to fill the vacancy, um, but we're moving forward.
Wanna just talk about your organizational chart?
Oh, yeah. Um, the town has, um, created, uh, through, uh, Deb, I wish she was here to give credit, um, we've created sort of an overview. One of the things that when Bill and I got together, we both started here as a team, we really didn't have a visual of what the organizational looks like. And, um, so, we created a department-by-department, um, organizational chart, uh, we have a version with names and without for you. Um, right now, I think the, the one in your book is, um, has names, but it, it's a good tool for us for, you know, when, even when you're presenting to the AdCom, you know, for a department to show their budget, who their people are, or when you're talking about structure. And it's a great tool for us to, we're going through a job description analysis process and a compensation study, so that you can kinda figure out where the pieces fit, or where maybe like future succession planning, um, as times change, technology changes, maybe some of the positions may get revised, or whatever, um, so, that's a, a new project we've worked on. And, um, finally, I, um, I just wanted to say that I was very proud to be made the chairman of the Mass Municipal Personnel Association at the September tenth meeting, so, um, I was the vice chair for a year, and, uh, so now I'm the chair, and I'll be in Boston tomorrow having our first executive board meeting, but it's pretty exciting, it's, um, you know, close to three hundred communities, um, are members.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great news.
I think Bill was once the chair.
Long time ago.
Yeah.
But I didn't have any gray hairs.
That's great news.
So, it's good news.
Alright, thank you.
Congratulations. And I would also say thank, thanks, uh, to Mary Beth while she's here, uh, about what she, about during the time I was gone, and she was able to keep it, keep the store together and do all the things that she needed to do, and, uh, while things were going well, unfortunately, the, uh, things didn't go that badly, of course, during the time, but, but obviously, there was a few major storms that, that, uh, were, were occurring while I was gone, and she pulled together the, uh, the emergency management team on short notice and worked out really, really well, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice, nice job.
Thanks, we have a good team, a very good team.
Um, I know, and, and I don't wanna, Chris, Chris actually was, was sort of a catalyst for pushing for this as well, so I just wanna make sure that you, uh.
Yeah, no, I've gotten it, uh, and I thanked her profusely.
No, that's, it's really helpful.
Being new and, and all the talks about this and that, I mean, it was good to be able to see the org chair.
That, that's what I faced when I got here, it was like I really wanted a visual of it, too. And although our payroll system had the ability to create, we sort of lost our patience with waiting for the new, the new version to come out, to be able to do that, so we just made it.
The detail of that, um, now I can see why you kept saying, yeah, we're working on it, we're gonna get it, I mean, it is very, very thorough and extensive, um, and all of the different departments, so you guys did a great job.
Oh, thank you, I think it'll really help in the budget process, too, with the AdCom, for them to understand and see who people are.
We will make it part of the budget process now, so that we can, going forward, so.
We'll be popping those on to the HR website as well, having the org chart up there.
And talking about the budget process, I met briefly today with, um.
Somebody.
AdCom, Tracy, sorry. And, uh, she's asking, you know, when, when the AdCom's gonna get the information, the, the warrant articles to start, they worked a meeting in late October. So, just generally town meeting, I know we had discussed dates, but where we sit with that, getting us the information, so we can forward it to the advisory committee.
I think we agreed on, on where, where the date we're gonna put forward to was the February, I thought.
Didn't Randy get a schedule together?
Yeah, he's working on the schedule now to, to finalize everything, finalize, we'll have it for the next meeting, but we, I think we're shooting for February twenty-second was the date, if I'm not mistaken.
We're looking at, uh, Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, because it was after, yeah, the holiday was, was the, was the first, the twenty-first, I believe.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're gonna go for that, too, only because we wanna be before, there's a, there's a. So we're, we're gonna go for that too, only because we wanna be before, there's a, there's an election coming up in the first week of March. And we wanna be before that, um, but, because, because there's a lot, it's thought to do with the, the election, of course.
Well, I talked, I brought this up the last time about a promise long ago not to bomb AdCom with a special in the, in the middle of their budget cycle.
Right.
And if you could give that con- some consideration, whether or not, uh, you know, this issue could be pushed off to the annual. Um, it's just that, uh, they will say, and, and I was on the committee, um, when this happened, is they didn't do a proper job to inform the public, um, you know, of, of what really they needed to know. So it's, uh, their work is not trivial, but if you interrupt it with a, an issue like this, which could absorb a lot of their time, um, it could really shorten their, uh, budget review. So something to seriously consider.
I think that the, the, the compelling issue that we're wrestling with is, is if we wait that long, we, we, we move, if, if we're, we're successful with the town hall project, that we'd lose the, 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 the start time right in the, in the middle of the spring.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of dynamics involved.
Yeah.
It's just that, uh, we've seen what happened when we had a, a special in the middle of the winter. And it just, um, we, we stumbled into an annual town meeting unprepared.
Tracy already just talked to me about like limiting the number of warrant articles if at all possible. So we've already pushed off some that'll go to the, the annual town meeting that, um,
Try and limit the, you know, if we can focus on just a couple of issues, I think it's probably smart to just do that, if we do that at all. To, to address your concern.
Just reminding, we made a promise to AdCom years ago, we would never do this again.
And they're not forgetting, so.
So, yeah.
Fair enough. I, I appreciate, appreciate that input.
Okay, so we have, uh, eleven, ten left, uh, action items. You wanna go through those?
Um, first one is, uh, council on aging and unit services. To make a motion, accept the Title III D grant worth eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to provide health promotion programs to consumers in the HESCO area.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to accept. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gratitude?
Number two, um, from Tavelino's, uh, I'd like to make a motion, we approve Sunday early openings during Patriots home games from one PM to eleven AM on eleven eight fifteen and twelve twenty fifteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made, seconded, discussion on the early. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number three, the Wampanoag Roadrunners, to make a motion, we approve the twenty-first annual old-fashioned road race on February fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, with a backup date of March thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, eleven AM to one PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, and then discussion, motion made, seconded, and it looks like it's all signed off. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Number four, animal control, and make a motion, we accept the gift of five hundred dollar donation from Anonymous for medical care of animals in the cust- custody of animal control.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion on the Anonymous donation? All those in favor?
Aye. Number five, friends of the town, common flagpole fund, I'd like to make a motion, we, we accept the gifts in the amount of thirty-four hundred dollars from various donors for the Foxborough Common Flagpole Restoration.
And I'll second that and thank you to all those who have donated.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Uh, is this the one, just wanna check. So they're not listed?
I didn't see them.
No, they're not listed.
Okay, any further discussion?
Do we, um, do you happen to have a total from Tina, what we're up to on that?
We are.
Your sign says almost twenty percent.
Yeah, it was about, uh, eight thousand dollars, eating, about eight thousand dollars.
That's an awesome sign, by the way.
Kudos to Mark Sullivan for making the sign.
But you were the Picasso, the painter.
I painted it, but Mark did the heavy work, so. And Ginny, I think, uh, the reason I'm asking, you made a generous donation to this.
Yeah, very, very generous.
Thank you.
Charm was on that list too.
John, you made a donation?
I did.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Did you make a donation?
No pressure, no pressure.
Let Jay Barrows get away. I've given you a hard time. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, number six, Foxborough Planning, uh, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the gift of fifteen hundred dollars from Robin Ford Sales to the Sharon Lawson Memorial Fund.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Mm-hmm. Number seven, Animal Control, make a motion, we accept the gift of a hundred dollars from Martha McMahon for the purpose of an adoption fee.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Number eight, Foxborough Recreation, like to make a motion, we s- um, accept the public event application for a Halloween parade on October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, from two thirty PM to four PM.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded for the Halloween parade, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Number nine, uh, from Lafayette House, like to make a motion, we approve the Sunday early openings during Patriot home games from one PM to eleven AM on ten twenty-five fifteen, eleven eight fifteen, twelve six fifteen, and twelve twenty fifteen.
I'll second that.
And then, uh, I just don't wanna approve something and dates are off. These dates make sense?
Um, I'm just questioning, are those all one o'clock games? I don't believe they are.
No, I checked with, um, uh, Deb and, and Masha about that. And one of them is like a four o'clock game.
Yeah, so.
Uh, our, our standing rule is that we only do this for one o'clock starts.
One o'clock games.
Yeah. Well, you just adjust the letter.
So do you know which date it is? We can take it out.
I think it's the ten twenty-five game. I believe they're playing the Jets. I think that's a four twenty-five game.
Give it a minute here, I gotta, I'm like, hold it there.
Well, here's another thing, if you go back up to Tavelina, why is Tavelino only asking for eleven eight and twelve twenty? And then there's four dates down below with Lafayette.
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked, I asked. And, uh, Deb called Tavelino's and, um, asked them what, you know, she explained that you have to ask for the dates and then he came up with two dates. And she said, are you sure? Because there's like, I believe there's three games that start at one o'clock. And he only asked for two. He's well aware of, of the dates. So that, 'cause that was my question to Deb and, and Masha. So they've already gotten back to all, you know, all three, you know, in regard to, uh, the dates.
Okay, so.
This is what they asked for.
The Lafayette two?
The Lafayette two, yeah.
Is it our policy not to do this for four o'clock games?
Yes, it is, that is our practice.
Right, yeah, but he, but they did the, the letter requested the, the four days.
Yeah, so, so the only date that's not a one o'clock is the December sixth game, which is at four twenty-five.
Right.
Yeah.
What is the ten twenty-five game? Is that a one o'clock?
Ten, the, the, uh, the ten twenty-five game?
Yeah.
I think that's a, uh, night game. It's a, um, it's a Thursday night game.
That's the Jets, that's, that's the one, that's the one o'clock game.
It's a one o'clock Jets, yeah.
And then November eighth is one o'clock, right?
Yeah.
And how about the twelve twenty?
There's one, September, uh, December twentieth isn't one o'clock.
That's one, yeah, so, yeah, so that's three.
The only, the only one, the only game that's not one o'clock is twelve six. That's a four twenty-five game.
Is that one of those that could potentially change or whatever? Is that maybe why it's just in case?
Well, the NFL reserves the rights to shift things, but, but we can't predict the future.
But it's usually later, like playoffs that they reserve.
Nah, we could go.
It's usually time, depending on the.
Yeah, depends how late the season is. Sometimes if it's got a lot of attention, they'll switch the, the NFL will change.
Yeah, it's usually after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
But the things with Tavelino's, Tavelino only asked for two dates and Deb did call him.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So what do we do on the Lafayette one? Um, do we?
Well, our option is to say yes, no, or, um, you know, to, to, this, we could say yes to the
The three.
Three and not the four.
Well, if we say, if we say yes to all four, we open the door to everyone else coming back, asking for that same date. So I say, let's be consistent and stay with, um, you know, opening at eleven o'clock for one o'clock starts only like we have through the years.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the motion was made, seconded, um,
Well, we're gonna, the motion was made including twelve six, so we're gonna, do wanna.
So we have a motion, so we didn't take action on it. We have a motion to rescind the motion?
Why don't we, um, vote no? Can we just vote no on my motion and then re- or?
Well, the motion's made. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries five zero to oppose it. Uh, new motion?
Um, I make a motion that we, um, approve the games of the early opening from one PM to eleven AM on the ten twenty-five game, the eleven eight game, and the twelve twenty game.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Alright. So somebody will let them know that that game did not get approved, I would assume.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Um, ten, we already did that. Um,
You don't need an early opening anyways, 'cause it's already open.
You already did ten.
Yeah, ten was done.
So number eleven, um, make a motion, we approve the Sunday early openings during Patriot home games from one PM to eleven AM on ten twenty-five, eleven eight, and twelve twenty.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Uh, more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item number twelve, we've got the, um,
Board of Selectmen meetings.
Uh, under, under the executive session, we approve the nine twenty-two executive minutes. These are the regular minutes.
Do you wanna wait till next week when Deb's here?
Um, could, do that. Did you guys, did you go?
I can make notes for her.
I looked through it, um,
I had no changes.
Yeah, they looked pretty good to me.
I had no issues.
Yeah, I.
You did?
Yep, on page fourteen.
You wanna make the motion first and then we can?
Uh,
Where do we want it?
No, we'll, we'll review it and then we'll, uh,
Okay, we'll review them, okay.
Yeah, on page, uh, fourteen, first paragraph, um, she mentioned DPW and it's actually DEP. And then on page, page six.
EPH or DEP?
DEP.
DEP.
On D, on D.
Oh, DPH, I'm sorry, DPH.
DPH, yeah, DPH, you're right.
Yeah. Um, and on page sixteen, it says, this is, um, something that I, I believe, something, I, yeah. I said, uh, the last line says, you can't say the people who voted for that zone weren't a hundred percent inciting a marijuana dispensary in town. And I, I meant were. You can't say that they were. It should've been were, not weren't. You know what I mean? So it should've been, you can't say the people who voted for that zone were one hundred percent inciting a marijuana dispensary in the town of Foxborough. So that was, that's all it had.
Any other, uh, comments and revisions? Okay, do I have a motion to, any affirmative?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, further discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And Mary Beth, you'll get those comments over to, um,
I'll get them to, and put them in a bar.
Am I make a motion that we close the Board of Selectmen meeting?
Um,
Second the motion of adjournment.
An, an, an discussion, under our information, there is a Saint Mary's is doing a, um, Foxborough Fire Department, and they did this last year, um, a special mass on the eighteen.
That was really nice.
Yes, if you guys can.
That's a good, it's a nice event.
Yeah.
I'll be flying back from Vis Mart, North Dakota, so.
Okay.
Who are you?
You have stuff to sign too? Or no, no signatures tonight?
Yeah, we have.
Just a few things right there.
Alright, so motion, motion was made to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Appreciate it.
Thank you.